For Tuesday, October 12, 2021. Roll call, please.
William Clevinger.
Rose.
Bill Giffens.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Sally Rishardi.
Here.
Rich West.
President.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'd like everybody to know that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now, everyone in the room, please make sure your cell phone is on mute during the meeting. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from previous meetings.
Pardon?
Yeah, once I can get.
Once?
Under my, under myself, I will.
Okay. Moving along then, approval for the September financials. Has everybody seen them?
Yes.
There are motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Rich. Motion made in second to approve the September financial reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next is the second reading ordinance of 2021-011, 2022 annual budget. Karen?
Last month, or yeah, last month, we had the public hearing and there were no public comments. The adopted budget was advertised as $2,905,949 and the adopted tax levy would be $1,000, or $1,373,711. We also advertised budgets of $603,000 for the grant fund and $164,926 for the American Rescue Plan Fund, just in case we get to a point where we're ready to spend those funds. Any questions?
I would, we approve the 2022 annual budget on second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the reading of the 2022 annual budget on second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion to approve on third read, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Rich. Motion been made to approve the 2022 annual budget on third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Next is public hearing on ordinance 2021-012, rezoning of 303 North Main Street from C2 to R1.
I move that we open the public hearing on that ordinance.
Second. Motion made in second to open the public hearing on ordinance 2021, rezoning of 303 North Main Street from C2 to R1. I will state that the Plan Commission, this has been reported by Plan Commission, and I have before me a letter from Don Fox on October the 11th, recommendation to approve the rezoning of 303 North Main Street from C2 to R1. Says as of September 21st, Plan Commission meeting, Reed and Ryburn Berwick, if I'm saying that right, of 233 South Main Street, appeared before the commission to request rezoning of the property they had purchased at 303 North Main from C2 to R1. This building was the former dentist office. The Berices are remodeling the interior but not altering the exterior or the footprint and intend to make the property their permanent residence. The three properties on the west side of 300 block of North Main Street are all currently zoned C2. However, that zoning does not reflect the current character of those properties. Members of the commission expressed the view that while not in favor of spot zoning, they believe changing the zoning of 303 North Main Street to R1 is the best use of the property. In support of the Beric's request, members noted that the property next door, which is zoned C2 and used to be the painter and the poet combination resident in Calvary, has not housed and operating business in several years, is currently primarily, used primarily as a residence. Building Commissioner Tuck DeWitt added that the property is across the street from 303 North Main, or zoned R1, and the residential use of 303 North Main made sense. Town manager Ginny Monroe added her support, noting that we have a shortage of residences in Culver, coupled with very vacant C2 properties in the downtown area. Mr. DeWitt said he believes we currently have too many areas zoned as C2 and that this is something that needs to be looked in, looked at in a new comprehensive plan. A motion to recommend that the town council approve the rezoning of 303 North Main Street from C2 to R1 was approved by commission members by a vote of seven to zero to zero. Signed, Don Fox, Culver Plan Commission Secretary. Open the public meeting for discussion.
Just FYI that the Bericks couldn't be here tonight. And on the Plan Commission meeting, I told them I could answer any questions that you might have.
Just for the record, to correct the letter from Mr. Fox, the Beric's address is 223 South Main, not 233 South.
Two what?
Two twenty-three.
Oh, their current, their, their current address.
Their current address. I don't think it affects the motion at all. It just.
Yes. Current, current. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? Hearing none is our motion to close the public meeting.
Let's make sure. Are there any comments online?
Thanks.
Check that out real quick. Doesn't appear to be anyone in chat asking.
Hearing none in the room or hearing none online? Your motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing on this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made to close the public hearing and second on the ordinance of 2021-012, which is amendment to the zoning ordinance for certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver and its two-mile boundary. Motion made second, is there a call for vote? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Um, first and second. Rich West was first, Bill Ham second. Was that to close the public hearing or to approve on first?
Close the public hearing. Didn't, did I not, did I not?
So we just.
That's okay, I was trying to.
Okay.
She was getting ahead of you as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I knew that we approved the proposed ordinance 2021-012, rezoning the property at 303 North Main Street.
Second. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and read that ordinance so that everyone knows what we're doing. Whereas the Culver Plan Commission, after legal notice and public hearing thereon, was preferably recommended to the Culver Town Council by a vote of seven ayes to properly rezone to residential R1 from the current zoning of commercial C2, following parcel, parcel number 50211630301600014 at 303 North Main Street. Whereas the Culver Town Council, having received and reviewed said recommendation and after conducting a public hearing on October the 12th, thereon believes that said zoning is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. Now therefore, it is ordained by the Town Council of the town of Culver, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the parcel indicated in the paragraph below, be zoned from C2 to R1, 50211630301600014, commonly known as 303 North Main Street. In section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage into publication is required to become, is required to become effective. Is there a motion? Add the motion. Is there a second?
Rich West motion first and Bill Ham second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Motion to carry.
Approve on second, third read. Motion been made and seconded, made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Rich West to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance 2021-012 on second and third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next. Next is council president appointment to CRC. As many of you may know, we've had two resignations in, since last council meeting. One was for the CRC and one was from BZA. Both of them are my appointments. I have chosen to make a appointment on CRC and that appointment will be Marty Eustervan. But he couldn't be here tonight. He had a previous engagement in Illinois. As far as the BZA goes, we've got like 14 months to go on that appointment. And what I'm suggesting we do is that we go ahead and take applications for that 14-month period of time and have the applications due by October 31st of this year and we'll make that announcement first council meeting in November.
For clarification, Marty's going to just fill the remaining 2021 term.
Just three months.
Yeah.
Because all members will be up and.
Reappointed.
Have to reappoint it or reapply for 2022. Thank you very much, sir.
No, it's.
Next, we have town managers report.
I'm just going to include installer updates, electric vehicle charging station. We're still satisfied with that until Rocky gets his part done. As I let you guys know, on the paving and crack ceiling, we had a meeting with EMB. Bob then met again with EMB to go through each of the roads and probably saw the crew out today because they were doing crack ceiling. I happened to drive by them at lunch earlier. They are going to fix the grates on the north end of town through this project and they're going to go back and fix the grates on South Main Street that we've had several complaints about, that they're going to do that once the crack ceiling is done. We expect everything to be done in the next week or so. So Bob's been monitoring that pretty closely. State Rosemont sidewalks in Jefferson Street, you've probably noticed the sod's growing in and that's going to have taken their lighting out so that we only have one set of lights now, which is the more decorative lights. We do have a couple of drainage issues along there that we have Troy taking a look at because we think they're more of an engineering issue versus a construction issue. So we'll get back to you on that, but we can't have, we can't close this grant out until we take care of that along the list. Lake Mac space two, as you guys can see outside the window, that structure has started. It's so far gone rather smoothly, to be honest. We did get approval to take out a couple of trees that were not originally on the list because we also have about 11 trees we don't have to take out down at the cemetery. And then we also had one of the neighbors along here on Washington Street request that we take a tree out because when we dug out where the sidewalk goes, the roots are exposed and he knew that tree would die and he wasn't real fond of it. So we, we did get permission and removed that. And some of the neighbors along here are hoping that we will have tree commission take a look at replacing some of the trees. So that's just an FYI. Status quo on Lake Mac space three and San Juan Slate and Jefferson Trail, those are further out because they're subject to grant. The Dixon Water Tower inspection, we plan to drain the tower next Monday and Tuesday with work then taking place on Wednesday. And that also means that we're going to have to schedule a hydrant flush, which we want the public to know about. Bob's figured out exactly when we do that. Normally, we would have been doing that that week, but we obviously can't when we're draining the tower. Water project proposal for Midwestern, that's currently status quo. I'm fully uniform with that. Careless proposal for the new well. Stuff wanted out is getting the IGEN process taken care of, which Careless passed, started that. That was phased on in that contract that you guys saw. So we won't see any real action down there until IGEN approves of us moving forward with permitting and that sort of stuff.
You know how long that's going to take?
It can take a while.
It can.
Yeah. I doubt that it'll finally get to a meeting, but if you see results from that, we'll let you know in time. The intersection at Cavalier Drive, and you know, we want to update the ordinance to include that stop sign. I think we'll probably have Jim do the updates because we also want to include the electric charging vehicle. There's a couple of things we need to get updated. But in the meantime, I sent you the MACOG report, which was, they basically hang a piece of equipment there to do that work. So if you've got any questions about it, let me know and I'll pass it on to MACOG.
All right. Let Karen do the.
I can do Karen. Um.
I mean, I'd be glad to do it, but.
You might just have your. Um, the Crossroads Stellar Project in the park, the regional stellar project, as you guys know, we're doing some work for Shannon. We have received some citizen letters, which has been great, and some other letters. So we should be wrapping up that probably this week. Of course, Shannon is staying right on top of us. The beach lodge building, I just wanted to update you, the Michiana had come back and did some ceiling work to take care of the leak that was occurring in the IT room. On the concession stand side where the sink was, I think we probably reported to you what was going on there. They had given us a quote to fix that because they had done that per spec. We thought the quote was maybe a little high, so Bob's crew took care of it and saved us about $1,300. So that's now taken care of. On the north end of that building, where we had the other issue with the elevator, we also have a quote on that, but Bob's getting a quote to see if we can do that on our own in-house as well. We're going to have to replace mulch there with rock. We're going to have to tie those downspouts into the grain basin. And then we want to add drainage for what's coming off of the parking lot and then daylight it out down the hill. So that's what we have Michiana quoting.
Your report indicates that Michiana to spec that drainage system and that drainage system was specced by the architect?
Architect, yeah.
So.
Also, the open downspouts was, were specced by the architect?
Yeah. So I, I would like us to explore if we have a recourse there.
Okay. Yeah, I might want to go over that with you, Jim, and just send you the original. If we get a quote on our end, we'll have a good idea of cost there. But I do have a Michiana quote. Anytime, I just didn't want to announce it in public meetings, but that number would be, we want to get multiples. But yeah, that's the status of that. The broadband task force, I was out last week, so I obviously haven't been back in touch. I'd like to meet with the task force again before presenting to you what we learned from the two providers. I think our task force needs to have a discussion on where we want to head with that and probably want to present to council on that. The economic development initiative, you'll receive an email from me sometime tomorrow. Some of the information I gave you here, we have come up with an agenda for meeting on the 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then again, on the 21st from 9:00 a.m. to probably one or two-ish. We would like to provide coffee service in the morning and then a lunch. So I did get some information from a local coffee company. And my estimate, without firm numbers at this point, just based on what we talked about, is going to be between 1,500 and 2,000 for both days. I'm thinking it's probably on the lower end of that, depending on how many responses I get from participants. My estimate is we're going to have 56 feet. So with lunches being around $10 a person and, you know, coffee service and drainage and that sort of going less. So my request is to get approval to order food for that. And then just to give you an idea of the agenda for the day, the first day, we'll spend with a really short sort of intro to recap what we did over the winter and then establish what we're going to do over that period of time. And it's really about forming the vision and mission for that alliance group that would come together. What do we want that to look like? How do we want entities to participate in that? How do we want individuals to? And we're also going to do a simple presentation on how the Crossroads did a similar activity at the county level because we're sort of thinking that there's a lot of similarities there and one will affect the other. And we'll probably have some Crossroads members there for the Marshall County team. But right now, that's kind of where we're at. I'd like to send out to the entire group that we had invited, an update with the agenda and explaining that. We'll provide some breakfast lunch service for the day after meetings. Karen hasn't gotten back to me on a specific venue yet at the school, but I'm assuming it'll probably be in the new auditorium that they renovated. So she was out today and we're hopefully going to catch up tomorrow before I mass email everyone. But my request for the motion is to approve the expense with a cap of say.
Not to exceed 2,000?
Yeah.
I would move that we authorize expenditure not to exceed $2,000 to provide food and beverages for the Economic Development Conference that we're sponsoring.
Second. Motion made by Rich and seconded by Sally to approve expense for up to $2,000 for economic, for food and beverage for the Economic Development Initiative on the 20th and 21st of this month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Okay.
Where's that money coming out of? Did we talk about that? Pardon?
It'll be the first.
Okay.
Um, and that evening, I have an appointment in South Bend, but the consultant Cheryl is going to be here. So if any of you would like to have dinner with Cheryl, let me know and I'll arrange something with her. And I can also check with some of the other organizations to see if anyone would want to do something like that. I thought it'd be nice for someone to maybe taper to dinner.
You said she was spending the night.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she will be available.
Yep.
Right.
Currently, no new news on the ready peanuts. I'm going to skip the next one so that Amber can make that announcement. If she is, I mentioned plans to do that at another meeting later this week. The annexation of Shannon Road, I'll probably. I will at some point reach out to. We did not talk last week when I was out sick, so.
And then the SE is going to be in touch with you with more information.
Great. I do have a couple of spreadsheets to send him.
Good.
The emergency services agreement with the academies, Jeff has completed some work on this. He shared some data with Bill Giffens and I earlier today. So we have reached out to them to request a meeting. Before that meeting, I'll share that data with you guys. And I thought it would be good to have Bill Ham look at it from a standpoint of how to present it. And so I'll get with Bill Ham before we get that scheduled, Bill.
Correct.
And I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
I do, I did want to let you know about a situation. I had a citizen write to me. Her water bill was excessive. It was one of those, you know, really large ones where you appear to have a leak. The owner, she rents the property, the owner of the property came to replace toilets, thinking there was a leak in toilet or some sort. They cannot locate if it was natural leak. It occurred, it looks like, from the report that Julie ran for him from like midnight to 5:00 a.m. Apparently, she used tens of thousands of gallons of water, but they can't figure out from where. So Bob looked into it at one point. Her neighbor, she apparently had zero usage on her bill, so she's concerned that the meter's not working. And I told her I would present that information to council because she feels like she can't locate a leak, her landlord can't locate a leak. And she thought that if there was that big a leak in a brief period of time, they would somehow know or see water coming from somewhere or hear it. But it resulted in about a $500 bill. So.
The person next door didn't have a bill?
One of her friends or neighbors had a $0 bill, so she sent me a picture of it over Facebook. That's in charge.
How many, how many gallons?
Tens of thousands, yeah. So.
Does your neighbor have? Those five hours?
Yes. Which, you know, that's not typical. A leaking toilet is usually over a long time. But nonetheless, the landlord showed up and was going to replace toilets, but he's like, none of these toilets are broken. So we are not sure how this resulted.
Can we take any action here at the council level? Can we dig into this a little bit further? I mean, the neighbor's bill and some other things.
Yeah, I think digging with Bob and all that, yeah.
I just want to let you.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't, no, this is unusual.
We'll take a look at it next meeting.
Yeah. 41,000.
True.
Wow.
You'd see that if it was on the ground outside.
Yeah.
You can't hide 41,000 gallons.
No.
Put out on the report in this little bit of time. So, and that, you know, from that respect, I'm going to advocate for expensive software.
I agree.
Um, anyway, that was the other thing. And then I did want to also give you a heads up that for that Tammerath Road property, we did, so for CMD to assess the potential cost of putting that in, we want to design that ourselves. We want to spec that out ourselves for future development, et cetera. And that's one of the things we've explained to them in our meetings with Jim and Sally and Bill, et cetera. So we requested a proposal for Midwestern. I'll forward that to you before the next meeting. We just got it today. And that proposal will show you costs for designing and engineering, that whole section to get it to Tammerath Road. But it'll also show you an estimate for what construction would be. And the reason we want to get the design engineering spec'd out is so CMD can look at what they would charge for their cost if we do an agreement with the CRC. So I'll forward that to you. I don't know if this is something that ultimately the council would bear the cost for, or the CRC or a combination thereof or what, but we have a proposal in now that shows what that cost could look like.
For everybody's education, let's say that CMD is Collins and his group. That's, that's who it is, just so we're not using acronyms or whatever. People don't know who we're talking about at the other end.
Construction management design.
Right.
Yeah. And normally they don't, I mean, you could conceivably have them design assist it, but we want to design our own. And Bob had given him Midwestern information on what we were looking for there, what type of pipes, sizes, et cetera. What type of pipes, sizes, et cetera. So we'll get that forwarded for the next meeting to give you some time to look at it and ask questions.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, that came in after I already sent you this, so.
No problem. Moving on to department head report, EMS.
I only have one thing for you here. I had a sudden resignation of one of my paramedics. So I'm in the process of getting someone internally uh to fill that spot here. So I may need to move on it really quickly here, so I will give this to you guys too. Um, on my recommendation to replace that person for your final approval on it. It came at a difficult time with scheduling and everything, but we pretty much got it figured out and uh worked upon, but I wanna get moved on this because we're gonna be approaching the holiday times and everything. And I have a couple others that are interested, but they're looking at, you know, uh, in the coming months to be able to start. So I wanna move on this person sooner than later to get it still, get it taken care of.
That's the full timer part?
Part time, which if you're basically just replacing the full-time person.
Yeah. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Eric?
Don't have anything tonight?
Thank you. Wayne? I'll tell C D O, okay. Bart, Amber, are you on?
She is.
Amber?
Oh, she was in the chat, but now she's gone. She may have been disconnected.
Bring it back, sure. Bob, are you on? Nope, Bob's not on.
She doesn't have any.
Good night. Let's move on to clerk's report.
I just happened to see claims over two thousand for your approval, the person for Simu House and um North Shore Fabrication, a business company, they're two thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And that's for pier removal. And the other one is for Wyland, um for Eve and Clever and Cersei for five thousand two hundred five dollars for legal fees.
Is there a motion to approve the claims over two thousand?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clever, seconded by Sally to approve first claims over two thousand, over the, all favor of those, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
If you wanna jump that cameras back on.
Yeah, Amber, go ahead.
Hi, sorry about that. Um, is it just department head report, sorry?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, I just have one small report. Um, it was announced um today, but we, the Culver Park Department, we were um a grant awardee from the Mar- the Marshall County Community Foundation. Uh, we were awarded ten thousand dollars to assist with the basketball court renovations at the park. Um, as we're looking to go ahead and fix up the court surface along with the new basketball hoops.
Very good.
Uh, and then also in addition to that, we, we haven't publicly announced it yet. Um, because we are having a memorial planning on Thursday at seven PM for Alex Paray. Um, just kind of to recognize the efforts made by everybody as part of the GoFundMe. Uh, the GoFundMe uh profits uh for the basketball hoops. And then kind of give everybody there an update of um the grant that we got and the plans that we have to utilize with the funds.
Okay.
That is all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clerk's report.
Wait, she's.
Oh.
I just saw that she popped up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Um, the second thing I have is this, I have a request for sewer forgiveness. Uh, the resident at one fourteen East Mill Street had a water leak. Uh, Bob did, did confirm that it did not go into the sewer. Um, and Julie figured out that it would be, the reimbursement would be fifty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. We, she did make it clear that it's a one-time thing and he wanted to move ahead with that, with the request.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Motion approved, refund of fifty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, sewer charges, all of them in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
At the last meeting, I provided a copy of a proposal from Baker Tilly to do a comprehensive financial plan. And I didn't know if any of you had time to, I didn't get any questions in the meantime. I didn't know if any of you had a chance to review that and wanted to move forward with it or um what your thoughts were. This is something we won't start until after the first of the year and we budgeted it for it. So it'd be between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. Basically, the idea is just to get a plan in place so that we're setting money aside for some of the big purchases that we, purchases that are coming down. Um, on a not annual basis, but a, a regular basis for the big larger equipment. Um, and just to get some plans in place so that we are setting money aside uh for future uses.
And we talked about it last meeting offline, but I just encourage that we be sure to include the um union township portions of those contributions because they affect some of the equipment for some of our next services.
Yeah, and I mean, it's gonna be a.
Right.
It's just not a couple of things.
Yes.
Do we have a price and a cost on this?
Maybe between ten and fifteen thousand.
Okay. Do you all wanna another couple of weeks to review it?
And if you want some time, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I was thinking if we're working on doing a comprehensive, I don't wanna wait a long time to get this.
Right.
Settled, but I do realizing that what we're gonna start in on a comprehensive plan for the town too, it might be something that it, it may be wise to wait until we get that comprehensive plan somewhat in place. Because then you know what other items that you want to do, want to accomplish so that we're not doing a financial review now, make more plans and then need to do another financial review. So I'm, I'm kind of torn. Um, so if you wanna give it more thought, that's fine. Um, another thing that I would like to have you consider, and I don't have any numbers or any real information on. But last week when Bill and I went to the AIM, AIM Ideas Summit, Baker Tilly presented on these uh services that they have, since Unba joined with Baker Tilly, they have many more resources. And one of the things that they do is um uh compensation package review. And basically taking a look at the different jobs, the different positions, rewriting the job descriptions to base it on what they're actually doing, but then also taking a look at what we're paying to see if we're, you know, um. I think it's all competitive, thank you, competitive with those around us. Um, I think when we, when it comes to compensation, we do depart, we, we focus on different departments every year. So everybody's kind of at different, different levels at a one particular time, one time. Um, so that's something I would like to see us undertake in the next year. Um, obviously, it's too late for this year to do anything, but for this salary, we need to be the solid ones. But we have a whole believer before we need to consider that.
Just for the council's information, and Bill would remember this, and I know you'd be familiar with it too. This is similar to what Wagner, Irwin and Shealy did at the county level. But now Baker Tilly is taking it on, so it's, it's someone else to take a look ahead and then I think in the long run, it's gonna be a heck of a lot cheaper than Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. But we don't have to act upon that night, but just as an FYI, that it's gonna be coming down the pike, so you might be thinking about it. As, as far, far as the uh, you know, the, the information she passed out about the uh comp plan, uh, you know, if you guys wanna take another couple of weeks to look at it and you know, at the end of the month, talk about it and act upon it, then that would give Karen, you know, more time. And it gives y'all time to ask questions.
Just gonna suggest Karen, perhaps you send it out before the next meeting again, just as a reminder. Didn't save it or review it earlier.
Or deleted it. Deleted, right, you can.
I never did. I keep all those.
And just another eye, the comp plans always have an economic development section in them. So what we're doing with Cheryl would be probably even more of a deep dive than what comp plans normally have. That unfortunately, with a lot of comp plans, that section is sorely lacking because your consultants into comp plans are not economic development people. Uh, so all the planning we have coming up will coincide quite nicely.
And it'll all fit together at the end there, yeah, that's good. Okay, let's do it that way.
Um, the American Rescue Plan Funds that uh we have half of sitting in our bank account. Uh, we do need to uh write the plan and I meant to send that out and have been buried by state border accounts and other things going on, so um. One thing, you know, obviously I, it would be my hope that we would choose just one project to invest these funds on in, and it's something that will benefit the whole town or at least portion of the town bringing that money for other projects um for the wild herb versus a number of short-term uh benefits, uh because this is a one-time thing and. Yep, um, but also from a reporting standpoint, I think there's always been a little bit of a bear, so. Um, but I, I also wanna show that this decision isn't being made in a vacuum. So um if you would, would consider having some sort of work session that we can come together, discuss it, show that we discussed it in the plan when it comes to reporting, which I have not looked at yet. Um, and a thank for the fact that you date back a little bit. Um, that we can show that it was a, hopefully at least council, some of the community decision.
How soon do you wanna have that work session?
Um, November would be fine.
Okay, so we can.
Yeah.
Talk about that next meeting. Okay?
Um. Wayne passed these two uh requests for uh salary increases for Nick, Colbert and Devin Watkins. And this is because of why?
Part of their. Here, Lee. Well, not here, but they're. Moving up in the salary list where they should be by the time.
Just because they finished the.
They finished the academy?
The academy training. Okay.
So he's requesting a seventy-five cent raise for each of them, which would take them from twenty-two dollars an hour to twenty-two seventy-five.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by uh Rich that we increased uh Devon and Nick uh in twenty-two to twenty-two seventy-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
An hour, that's an hourly rate. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Reminder to everyone, we've gotten different phone calls and emails that the council passed the ordinance several years ago that Halloween would take, Halloween trick-or-treating would take place from five to seven on October thirty-first. So I'm just putting that out. Um, I think we've, the newspapers and stuff have contacted us, so I'm sure we'll be most in proximity. But just to let everyone know that this one is taking place. And um Jamie mentioned this earlier, but I'll just remind people. Um, I did send something, information out about hydrant flushing and that's not going to take place next week, so go ahead and do your lights. Well, I know there was a tank going down, you might wanna, you might wanna post some of that, so. But that's all I have now.
Thank you, Amber. Now attorney's report.
And not, not much to report. Uh, someone told me that there's a new roof going up on seven oh nine Abyssbo, so.
Correct.
I think it's done, but.
Yeah, it's done.
Done, so that was good. Unfortunately, um, I haven't gotten any new timeline as to the rest of the improvements that should be there. Oh, brother, what is this? And uh. But the last conversation I had with uh, not Kathy, but the other gentleman, uh, he was hoping that with the new roof and, and the things that have been going on, that that would buy him some time into the spring to kind of get a new. Right, that. As I mentioned before, I did have some conversations with Phil. Um, he is gonna change the engagement to include CRC as well as the town Culver on the beach view properties, annexation, TIF business, uh so that, you know, he can help us all on, on all phases of that. Um, the uh, I, I understand he's got an engagement with CRC for um to make some changes for the better use of the TIF funds that have been talked about the last meeting. And uh, he certainly is uh hoping to adding real estate to the TIF areas. So that's something that we're gonna need to continue to, to think about. And there are some, as I understand, some projects that you may.
Right.
Be able to take some advantage of, so um, that all continues and, and I think we'll need to see some things happen fairly soon, but we'll start working on it. And that's all that.
Oh, I have a question. Do you have an exhibit that you wanna as well? Flap right on? Is there, is there somebody's picture up there when they were twenty-one years old and they uh were working at Treat's uh Squire Shop in uh Plymouth with uh somebody else you know fairly well?
Well, the, the photograph that you're referring to uh was the three gentlemen, you know, actually young lads at the time were working at Treats, uh, and I'm the senior of those three. Uh, the middle one, you wouldn't probably recognize as being Buzz Krone, who's done some work for the town uh from time to time. One on the right is uh, is Jim Treat, who is also an accountant and is associated with Buzz. Uh, and I think that photograph was taken when we were drawn in to assisting the Miss Plymouth pageant. And Deb, that's a Deb Mogan, as you remember her. She was actually a top five finalist for Miss America after winning the Miss Plymouth.
But isn't it amazing how we get these photos?
Yeah, well, I don't know who's, who's, uh, I'm sure Buzz Krone had something to do with it. And Tom to the left. Notice where the pointer arrow is on the billboard? And I'm uh, uh. I'm gonna make a note of that and Mr. Krone will receive some kind of uh retribution. He, his office by his right is in Westfield, Indiana, it's right next to a restaurant. And the parking's not easy there and so I convinced him a long ago I could just park in his parking lot. Easy access into the restaurant, so I apparently it's. Getting back in.
Well, we figured you would appreciate this, can I?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, thanks.
Okay, moving right along. Is there uh anyone here for utility shut-off or ordinance violation? Are you seeing none? Time for citizen input. Anyone in the room for citizen input?
For this hour?
Sure.
Chester, the impound, twenty South Main, any news on two oh five Akron?
I tried to find, I need Google with that. I couldn't find it. Is it the one with all the stuff in the yard? Okay, that's what I thought.
It's tied up in an estate, we know that.
But is there town council action plan?
We need to write the exec, we need to go with the executor and go start there, I guess.
Yeah, uh, well, it just mows, there's something happening.
Yeah.
They're paying taxes because across the street on Abyssbo is up for tax sale. Um, so I don't know what the deal is with that exactly. Um, but. You know, we need to do, I mean, I, we're addressing some of these things.
And the other thing I have for you is uh, Bill, right on your corner, that tree. Right.
That nuisance.
Uh, it's been taken down by the tree commission because of the uh root structure messing up the curb and busting it out.
That's too bad, that tree.
It is, it is.
Those grand trees and.
I know. And, and the people that live there are not pleased at all. But needed to come down.
No, I understand approximately the street.
And, and the curb. And, and the curb will be redone, you know. And they're, they'll get a, they'll get a new tree, but it's not going to be anything like that. Mm-hmm. Anyone else in?
Yeah, the, the Gary, Eric, ten oh one, South Street, Culver, Indiana. Regarding the Abyssmo property that's got the new roof on it, did they acquire a, a permit to put that roof on there?
Yep. The question, but yes. Anyone else inside? Is there anyone online for citizen input?
Um, just to address that property, I was thinking I could send them a letter and say that I've yet to receive the schedule and that we still want a schedule.
I wouldn't recommend we do that.
I told them orally that we do, but.
Well, let's follow it up with a letter.
And I told Chuck the same, so, and it, but it was supposed to come to the office here, and they have yet to do it, so.
Okay.
I'll send a letter certifying.
Can I have one more thing?
Sure.
Um, I'm not a roofing contractor, but as I walk by, it doesn't look like it's been put on very professionally. Uh, is there an inspection process for the roof? There's a permit, does Chuck go out there?
We can have him inspected.
Write him up.
Know that, I mean, that, that we, we filed a suit against that property. So there's a case, so I, I'm interested in that we get to a point where we can conclude the case. That's why we need a schedule and some kind of order that we can file with the court because the case is still pending. And like, court gets excited from time to time when there's not much activity going on, so.
And pictures and write-ups will mean a lot, if it's done correctly in court.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just think, you know, professional inspectors report saying, hey, it's not put on right versus a lay citizen walking by and taking a picture of it.
Sure.
Just doesn't look like, I, I mean, I wouldn't give them the last payment.
Excuse me, this is, this is Russ Mason. To answer Gary's question, it's the responsibility of the Marshall County Building Inspector to inspect that roof to make sure that it's constructed properly. That's not Chuck DeWitt, that's the Marshall County Building Inspector.
And uh, I think that work was done by the owner's own kind of contractor, I think.
Thanks, Russ.
Which they would have to be registered with Marshall County, right?
They, they, they should have been, right.
We can check into that.
We can check into that too, yeah. Anyone else online for citizen input?
Seven oh nine.
Are you seeing none? Let's move on to council issues. Rich?
The only thing I, um, I guess is to encourage either Chuck or whoever to, uh, take a look at the property that Carrie's talking about on Akron. Um, I mean, I, I've been by there several times in the last year and it's you know. And um, I understand there may be illusions or inherent
Right.
or something like that, but that's, that shouldn't be our problem, then it was problem.
We still need to proceed
Yeah.
forward, right, but it's going to be a long drawn out process. But doing nothing, nothing is done, I'm just unfortunate.
I agree with that.
Good point. Wayne, that's it. I hope the council will join me in wishing our esteemed clerk, Karen, a very happy birthday on a momentous birthday. Any other things? Sally?
I just wanted to pretend that, that I think it's great that she was able to get the grant from the Marshall County Community Foundation.
Very good.
Good deal.
I think she originally budgeted thirty thousand for that project. It was ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She needs that elsewhere.
Amber's done a good job.
Yeah, I mean, it shows persistence also because I think that's the second or third source that they went to for a grant on that same project.
The third one.
Went to AARP and somebody else.
Bill?
Nothing here.
I got a couple of things. Um, as Karen said earlier, she and I did go to the AIM conference to translate last week, and I must say that this was by far the best conference that I've been to down there for AIM, and I really encourage that the rest of the council get a chance to go to these uh, with what we're doing with the TIFs and things that are going on in today's world. It, it was very, very beneficial. I highly recommend going to those. The other thing, I also want to uh, recognize Karen. You all may or may not know, but that there, you know, y'all probably heard of the Ironman competition. And within that Ironman competition, I understand it is a two-point-four mile and a two-point-four mile swim, a hundred and twelve mile bike ride, and a twenty-six-point-two marathon run. And our esteemed clerk, Karen Hime, did it in fifteen hours and nine minutes this past Sunday. That's all I have.
So you could do it before her thirtieth birthday?
Yeah.
That's great.
I'm not going to say what I said to her this morning.
I knew that we had tried to play.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. And alive. Swimming, biking, biking. Uh, if I joined that Ironman, I wouldn't have to worry about phase two or phase three.
It's quite an accomplishment, I'm telling you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that your first?
That was my first call.
Wow.
I'm afraid I couldn't finish it.
Did he give that to you down the AIM thing, that rascal? He, he had that floating around right after our four A, uh, four A into uh, you know, electric stuff. So I knew he had that thing.
Well, that was a quick reading.
Hey, were you, uh, did you win?